All right, good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here. Would you join me and let's start with a prayer and a pledge of allegiance? Heavenly Father, thank you for today. Thank you for the return of the sun after a beautiful weekend, yet cold. We thank you for the change of the seasons and each day is a surprise for us. We thank you that it was just a light coating and no problems thus far due to weather. Lord, we start the new year out and we just turn this year over to you. We don't know what's in store, but we pray for wisdom and guidance on a daily basis as we make decisions that certainly affect more than just ourselves. We just pray that we will always do what is in the best interest of the people of this fine county. We thank you for those that work for the county, those that support the county with their taxes. Lord, we are grateful for the wisdom that this group in this room brings and we thank you for the expertise that each one has that enables us to make these decisions. We turn this agenda over to you in Christ's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
For the record, today is January 11th, 2021. It's just after 9:00 a.m. We're gathered for our first meeting of the calendar year 2021. And I'll begin by welcoming our newest commissioners, Mr. Jeffrey Parchman here in Precinct One. And we look forward to working with Jeff. We anticipate a great relationship and a great representation for Precinct One by Jeff. So welcome aboard.
Thank you.
This is, first item is number one, is public comment time. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address on a general item basis the court? This is your opportunity. You can also address the court on any one of the individual agenda items. I do know that I have Ray Barrett here and Ray's going to talk to you about an item that I think he thinks I was going to put on the agenda. And I don't know what I was thinking, but I didn't do it. So he's going to present the idea and give us a couple of weeks to mull it over and then it will be on the agenda next time. So Ray, thanks for being here. If you want to take the mic and tell us what you're thinking.
Good morning. I was contacted a few weeks ago by Greg Blair. I don't know how many of y'all know Greg. He's JP over in Omaha. He's got a guy Billy Weatherford who's also the, he's the chief of police in Omaha and he's also the constable, one of the constables from Morris County full-time. And Greg contacted me about wanting to buy one of the patrol cars, the old patrol cars that I had that's been turned back in over at the county barn. The car that he was wanting to see about buying, it's got 170 something thousand miles on it. The air conditioner doesn't work on it. All the equipment, police equipment's already been taken off of it. And so I thought maybe it was something, Greg's been a big help to us over the years, being in law enforcement himself and stuff for a while. And so I was going to see if maybe we could donate that car to him. Billy Weatherford, if I didn't say, he's the guy that's needing the car. And so I was going to see if we could donate that car to him so they didn't have to spend money. It's not really worth anything anyway. There's going to be a lot of work that has to be done to it. So they're going to be spending money on it anyway. So I just wanted to find if we could donate it.
Who would be the donee? Who's the official receiver of the vehicle?
I guess it would be Morris County. I mean, I can get with Greg. I didn't think about asking that, but I assume it would be Morris County because it'd be used on Morris County. It's a 2008 Crown Victoria. It's not in great shape.
This is one of two vehicles that, gosh, I think nearly a year ago I asked y'all's permission to allow us to sell two Crown Victorias, one of which Paul Lindsey used to drive and one Ray used to drive. And man, I got a lot of calls there initially and I had to keep lowering that price and lowering that price. I finally gave up. We had to start the battery a couple of times on Paul's and we eventually found a buyer at the, I don't remember exactly, it was below a thousand dollars. And I don't think that Ray's is in any better shape than that one. And there's no point in letting this vehicle just sit there and rot. But we just, I just couldn't get any interest in these vehicles advertising it. And if we'd have put it on the, we can always give this over to Dale McGonigal for him to try to find a buyer, but I believe when he discloses the things that it needs, that may be a challenge. We'll discuss this further at the next meeting and consider what we want to do with that.
I'll get with Greg and find out if we could, I believe, I said, I think Morris County would be donating it too. So I'll find out with you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Sir, anyone else? Item number two, considering possibly approved minutes from the December 28th, 2020 meeting. That was our final meeting of the year a couple of weeks ago.
Make a motion.
Motion to approve that set of minutes is made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Item number three, report from commissioners regarding roadwork status. And we're going to start. Jeff, I'm going to put you on the spot and I know you may not have a whole lot to report and we'll let you ease into it today.
Okay. Basically, we started out patching potholes due to all the rain we've had. The roads are in pretty bad shape. Had some culverts that washed out. 1465 was one of them. We had to close the road down overnight. We got it repaired and been replacing some street signs and that's pretty much it.
Commissioner Fitch?
We've had to replace some street signs, clean some culverts and some bridges off during the heavy rains that we had. We patched a few potholes and a few road places that kind of caved in. We cut some trees down and cleaned up a bunch of brush on the side of the road. Been servicing our equipment. We got everybody, CDL drivers in the county. We have 16 of us. We got registered with the Drug and Alcohol Clearing House, which was a new federal guideline we have to do. And we got that done by January 5th. So we got it actually done on January 4th. It was really, really easy. We'll also test and do a query check on backgrounds for new hires from now on. And then this helps us stay in compliance with all our grants and of course, it's a federal law now. And then we burned some brush piles and looks like we're going to be getting out there patching and trying to get these roads back in shape starting today. As long as the weather permits, we should have a good week of it.
Thank you. Commissioner Applewhite.
We got everybody back last week off vacation and all that. We did, had some stuff to clean up, trees and stuff. But other than that, we was just going to do some patching, but didn't have the, you know, couldn't get the material one day. But we're going to start back patching. Hopefully it dries up, we can get started after today.
Thank you. Commissioner Parker?
We had a covert that didn't completely wash out, but it was close to it on 4370 last week. We got it patched up till we can get one in. I've got one supposed to be here. It's a pretty good sized covert. Supposed to have one in here this, middle of this week and we're going to try to get it put in. And got several other folks that have called wanting culverts installed at their driveways and we have got them lined up to try to get them done. And just been patching, trying to get caught up from the holidays. Had several trees that we had to pick up last week that went down over the holidays that we got picked up last, first part of last week.
Thank you. Item number four, this is an annual item and we have here with us today Lanny Walker from Arnold Walker Arnold. He's going to give us a report based on the completion of the audit for the fiscal year ended September 30th of 2020. Welcome, Lanny.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Dr. Meehan, being here with y'all. Really found everything to be in good order this year. I don't have any written recommendations to give to you. You have an unmodified report, which is what you want. It's a clean opinion and everything is good. They do a great job with the numbers for y'all so that you have opportunity to make good decisions financially, very strong financially, good fund balances. I'll just run you through a few numbers. Not going to take very long today, but if you have a book there that you want to look at, turn over to page 15 inside this report. And I'm just going to highlight a few things, again, not a whole lot I'm going to say. But again, strong finances, good controls and really a good report, I think. We ended the year in the general fund with a fund balance of 5,859,000, which was an increase of 67,000. And I know that y'all were thinking it would be just pretty much a flat year. And so we actually did add a little bit to the fund balance in the general fund. The debt service fund, as was budgeted, we had a decrease in there. As you can see, we have a fund balance of 5,753 at the end of the year. The capital projects funds, total fund balance of 3.68 million, which is up 53,000. The only thing that happened in there this year was just interest income earnings. And of course, 2021, I know you're going to spend some of that money on some highway right away. All the other funds, which includes your funds, road bridge funds and such, if you compare it year to year, we only had a change of about $6,000. So we increased about 6,000. So very good position there. On page 18 and 19, just a couple of comments I might make. Again, this explains the increases or decreases in fund balances. General fund, one of the things that was surprising to me is that even with the COVID, the sales tax revenue actually went up over the prior year, up about 7% actually, which was kind of a surprise. Property tax revenues, if you compare year to year, was actually down because previous year we collected on some luminant money that had been owed to us for about three years. And so, but overall, again, a very good year financially. The, as I said, the debt service fund went down, but that was as budgeted. We're getting money in from the tech stock for about 8.4 million a year to pay these bonds that are owed on various things. Of course, we did refund debt this year to save on interest payments in the future. And so that was accomplished, did that twice. I want to call your attention over to, let's go over to page 64, page 64. Just wanted to call your attention to this page for a second. This is the internal service funds of the county. And what I really wanted to talk about was the insurance fund. Of course, we quit being self-funded at the beginning of last year. Still had an increase of 93,000 in there, so 1.1, almost 1.2 million fund balance in that insurance fund. And it's planned to transfer that money back, some of that money back this year to the general fund because it's not going to be needed. And then as time goes along, may be able to transfer the rest of it. So again, I know I haven't said a whole lot, but you know, everything is in good order. We found all the offices to be in good order this year. Good controls, good people that take care of their business and as well as you taking care of the budget and the finances. And my compliments to Barbara and the ladies down in the auditor's office for doing a great job and recording things the way they're supposed to be. So if you have any questions, I'll certainly try to answer.
Typically, you have adjusting entries where you maybe correct something that you found that didn't look right, or maybe you make a correction based on calculations that's part of your normal annual work. Did you have any adjustments for us that we need to know about?
Well, I've given those to Barbara and they were kind of as usual. In some of the funds that, well, the funds that collect taxes, we adjusted delinquent tax receivable each year. Y'all could do that, should you decide to do that, but we've normally done that each year just to, really the balance in the receivable doesn't change from year to year and we just adjust that to whatever receivable, like September 30th each year. Outside of that, there's some, there were some accounting items related to these refundings of the debt because it's quite complicated. What we do there does not affect your bottom line, but we had to record those gross proceeds and the transfers out to the bond escrow agent that's going to pay those bonds, those old bonds as they come to you. But that's typical everywhere we go that does those refundings, they leave it to us to do that. So y'all had budgets for one of them, but not the other. And then you didn't actually record the accounting for it. But again, it's no effect on the bottom line because you know, you're getting the money in and just transferring it out to these escrow agents. So other than that, no, there were no entries. We did not affect your bottom line income. I don't believe any that I can recall. So you know, a few little balance sheet type items and that's it. So everything was really, really in good shape.
You know, he's talking about these refunding of bonds and Jeff, for your benefit as well as mine and the other guys, we're talking about the debt that the county has related to the building of the loop. And the county each year pays a substantial amount of money to service that debt, but at the same time, we also get about eight and a half million, about eight million from Texas because they reimburse us for part of that debt service on that loop. So if you look at the county's financial position, you'll see we still owe a lot of money related to that loop, but we're counting on the continuation of Texas continuing to send us money every six months to the tune of about eight million a year. And what Lanny's talking about is we were able to, just like you might refinance your house and get a better interest rate, we were able to do that on part of those bonds to get a better interest rate. And that's good for all of us if we can save some interest income, especially when you're paying it back over, you know, 17, 15, 16, 17 years. Okay. Well, that's good to know. You didn't have to make any adjustments for errors that we made or things that we were lacking. And we have a good, strong fund balance at nearly 6 million. We've got fund balance prepared there for the building of the new road at Chapel Hill that we certainly hope will cover that. Anything else that we, the overseers of the budget, need to know about?
Not that I can think of. Your thing's in good order.
And I say we, the overseers of the budget, we trust Barbara to do that. She does a great job for us and keeps us in the ditches, as do you. So thank you very much for the good news you bring us and we will continue to do our best. Any questions about anything for Lanny? Go ahead.
All right.
Thank you, Lanny.
Thank you very much.
You team? Thank you, Lanny.
Appreciate it.
Be careful. Item number five, consider and possibly accept the 2020 annual fire report from Chief McCray. We've got a couple of items here that we're going to talk about. And the purpose of these two items is to give you information. You know, in the next couple of years, we're going to be revisiting the subject of fire protection. And as you know, we work together with the city of Mount Pleasant and are very fortunate to have such a great department there under Chief McCray. And they provide us with a whole lot of help from time to time. And as we begin to aim towards, you know, in a year and a half, two years from now, where we talk about that fire contract with the city, it's good to keep you guys and the public informed as to, you know, just how much, you know, where the burden lies with, you know, between our departments, how many runs are they having to make? How many people are we able to supply at each one of those calls? How many times the city of Mount Pleasant has to show up? And so here, we're just simply going to go over this fire report and I've given you a copy of that. I've got Chief McCray here. Chief, is there anything, any general comments you want to make here and kind of guide us through this so that we interpret this data properly?
Definitely agree with you.
Just talking in generalities, is there any trends that you saw this year that we should know about?
Not in particular. Like I said, it's kind of surprising our number of structured fires actually went down a little bit. With everybody being home for COVID, I don't know whether that contributed to it or not, but that's the biggest trend you can see is the number of structured fires overall from 20, or from 2019 to 2020. The, again, I think I said it here or told you that the Forest Service is expecting a substantial fire season this year based on the La Niña event that we're in right now and the amount of fuel that's out there, dead grass and what have you compared to '05, '06 year and 2011. If that transpires, then we could have some issues this year if that does. Because that, if you remember 2011, those years, those were some really bad years as far as the drought and driving. So that could deal with some problems this year.
Talk about, you know, we're here the other day talking with me about your expectations and how the volunteers, what you see as their role and what are the main areas that they can help? And specifically, you talked about the structure fires and the expertise and training that those require, the danger that's involved there and the fact that, you know, we don't have as many structure fire capable guys within our volunteer departments as we once had. And how does that affect the overall picture of county fire protection?
That's correct. The, generally speaking, our VFDs, our voluntary fire departments, do not have the people to do the interior structural firefighting. Now, we do have some. In fact, we're starting our fire academy this year out at the college. It is a structural firefighting class and we have some of our volunteers. Marcus' son is going to be in that. And we've got two or three other volunteer firefighters that are going to be in that that will get them trained to that level. But generally speaking, our VFDs do not provide structural fire protection, initial attack type stuff. That's going to be us. When we get there, we'll do that. Now, can the VFDs make a difference in a structural fire if they get there before we do? Absolutely. You know, they put water on the fire from the outside, get it knocked down, slow it down a little bit. We get there and can finish mopping it up. Obviously, if there's somebody in the house just getting the fire knocked down somewhat, will increase their survivability until we can get there and can get them out. Generally speaking, our VFDs, we depend them then for water. We carry a thousand gallons in our engine that we go out with. But on most of the structural fires in the county, that's not going to be enough. So we depend heavily on the VFDs to be able to bring water to the tankers, hit their tankers and supply the water for us. They also can do stuff outside. You know, the support roles in the county around a structural fire, whether it's traffic control or setting up the water supply itself, making sure the tankers are moving. They can help with rehab, they can help changing out the air cylinders in our bottles. There's a variety of things outside a structure that the VFDs, the volunteer fire departments can participate in. But the actual firefighting is not. What we would like to be able to get to is, they wouldn't necessarily have to be trained to be a full structural firefighter, but if we could get enough of them trained so that once we get the fire knocked down and controlled, the next stage after that is going in and doing the mop up, finding hot spots and stuff. And if we could get our VFDs trained to that level, so when we get the fire knocked down, we can leave the fire with them, get our spokes back in service in case something happens somewhere else that we have to go to. You know, we're working towards that, but we haven't got there yet. So the other areas that we get support from the VFDs is on motor vehicle accidents. It's like this morning, I picked Alco, Suffolk River Bridge was iced over. Cop on them got there first. I think we had, what, about four or five accidents that occurred while they were there to do the ice. But normally, you know, traffic control, the extrication piece is generally going to be, Mount Pleasant does the extrication of people that are trapped in the vehicle. But we might have to have a landing zone set up for helicopter traffic control because, you know, TM's only got so many folks that are out there. So you know, traffic's a big deal. I worry more about us losing firefighters on traffic accidents than I do at a structural fire by a long shot. We had a couple of close calls, I think this morning, which was actually icy, but just people driving down the road, period, on a day when it's sunshiny. We've had some close calls even on those days, but we're getting our VFDs to do that. And then by contract, the volunteer fire departments are tasked with vehicle fires and grass fires, taking care of those. If they're in their district, then they take care of those without us going. Now, if they get out there and they need help or if it's one of those situations where there's nobody there to respond, then we're going to go out. If it's, if the fire season progresses like we, like TFS is expecting, we're going to go with them every time. Because if they, if one of our VFDs, we send them out by themselves in an extreme fire situation and it gets away, then it's just going to take us more time and effort to get it under control. So if it's, we send out a fire behavior report every morning on how bad things are predicted to be that day. And if three of the categories are red conditions, then we automatically respond with the VFDs on a grass fire. On vehicle fire, if it's just a passenger car and we travel up there, that's, they're going to handle that. But if it's an 18 wheeler or something like that that we know could cause problems, could have hazardous materials, what have you, they're going to go in and respond to it with them also. But our VFDs, you know, they play an important role in supporting the fire department, Mount Pleasant's operations. But again, Mount Pleasant pretty much carries the load of the fire protection in the county. Now, as you saw in December, we really had some issues when we had overlapping incidents. We had about 18% I think, or better in December where we had overlapping. There was, on Saturday, the 26th, we had like six overlapping plus six others that didn't overlap. And out of those six, there were two or three of them that we couldn't send anything to because we were already tied up. We sent a command, I went and one of my deputies went to a couple of calls just to be there to help manage it. But we hadn't sent any brush trucks or anything because we didn't have, we were already tied up. So, you know, and it's not, you know, our VFDs are volunteers. That's exactly what they are. And as time has gone on, and not just in Titus County, pretty much nationwide, our volunteer fire service just continues to be not what it was 10, 20 years ago where people are just not volunteering to come out and do it. So it's not saying anything bad about our VFDs, it's just saying here's the situation that we're in based on the abilities of our VFDs. So do we anticipate that improving any? Not really. I know our departments pick up one or two every now and then that are pretty good. It's like Marcus just joined Sugar Hill, him and his son. That helped, but that's the kind of exception to the rule. So that's kind of where we're at right now.
I'm going to direct him to this worksheet right here to follow up on that comment that you're making there. You know, as time goes on and folks get busier and work longer hours and are less available for volunteer activities, you know, we may, we've got, look there at that second, about right about there in the middle. And you can see we've got lots of good volunteers that are signed up in these individual departments. But again, their ability to always be at these fires, we need to understand what the reality is. And if you look there, 13% of members make 50% or more of the incidents. 21% make 25 to 50% of the incidents. And 65% of the membership makes less than 25% of the incidents. Again, it's not that they don't want to be there, not that they're shirking their responsibility. They've got other responsibilities and they can't necessarily make that. They may have a job where they have to be there. They may be out of town. There's any number of reasons. But you know, as we look at the rosters of all these departments, we need to be realistic and understand we can't expect that all those guys are going to be there at each one of those incidents. So you know, Chief has put a lot of time into this report as well as that multi-page report that I sent. report that I sent to you. And you would do well to review that report, gives you a real good understanding of just exactly how much fire activity goes on, how many folks are able to attend those incidents from our departments, how much is supplied by Chief McCray, and he always gives us more manpower and equipment than he is obligated to according to our contract.
And that's most of the time, just like on the 26th, we were not able to provide that to you because we were not able to, we were tied up, we just wasn't able to do it.
Well, and that's what happens, you know, we talked about the concept of a county fire department. Well, we could potentially face that same situation where we've got a fire in the north end and we've got one in the south end at the same time. And, you know, if we're dependent only upon the county fire department, which would be relatively small, one of those could very well get neglected, if not both of them get neglected if we're trying to split manpower.
I was real close on the 26th to calling back our off-duty guys. The thing about the calls on the 26th is we had a really low relative humidity, which anytime the relative humidity gets below 36%, that's when the fire behavior increases. And then that day was around like 19%. The thing that we didn't have that day was the wind. If we'd had the wind, the fires probably would have been a lot harder to put out, it may have caused more damage. But, you know, they didn't. And like I said, the VFDs, when they got there, were able to handle it, none of them really got out of control, and so I didn't call back. You know, we had 10 guys on duty, which means we had 20 guys that are off-duty, and we would have started trying to get them back in to start helping cook. We were on the brink of that Saturday, but it just never pulled the trigger.
And of course, the county has no paid firefighters. Chief McCray has, you know, has quite a few paid firefighters, and so they're there with, you know, when they show up for work, they're going to be at those incidents, whereas a volunteer, again, he's got another job more than likely, and his availability is not going to be the same. And so, as we go forward, we've got to always keep in mind that concept of the level of volunteers that we have and their ability to be at a structural fire or a grass fire, vehicle incident. And so, understanding how much we rely upon the city is important as we renegotiate this fire contract and decide, you know, what are we going to do? Are we going to create our own department and have paid volunteers there? And, you know, that's certainly a possibility, an expensive possibility, but one that we can consider nonetheless. Any questions for Chief about the annual fire report?
No, I haven't.
Thank you for the numbers that you keep. I know you've got great records and thank you for the data that it gives us and the ability to make decisions. This is an action item, and if you have any more discussion, that's fine. Otherwise, I just want to make it official that we accept that fire report from Chief McCray, not necessarily that you agree or disagree with the data that's in it, but that we accept it as presented.
Make motion, we accept it.
Motion is made to accept the 2020 annual fire report from Chief McCray. That motion's made by Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Moving on to item number six, another fire topic. And I've given you a copy of what at this time is nothing more than a proposed document. We do not currently have a contract with any of our volunteer fire departments, and there is information in here that is new. And this has not been distributed to any of the volunteer fire departments. I'm kind of putting this out here for you, and this is something that I anticipate we'll work on over the next couple of meetings anyway. But I'd like you to become familiar with this document. It has some items in here that are going to make volunteer firefighters, especially chiefs and membership, go, whoa, you know, where did this come from? And a couple of things that I want to bring to your attention in here, I'll point those out in a moment. But, you know, Barbara and I have talked about this. We feel like with the amount of money that we give to our volunteer fire departments, you know, we think it would be good to document what the expectations that we have as a county that is funding, or at least partially funding, I should say, our volunteer firefighters in relation to the labor that they put in and the personal wear and tear on their vehicles and the fundraiser money. You know, what the county gives them is, you know, is just a small component of that. But what I think this document does, or at least attempts to do, is to clarify and instead of, you know, having some, you know, subjective guidelines for these departments to follow, it spells out for them what some clear expectations are. If you look there on page one, this is a significant one here that's a part of this document. And as you know, we're paying the volunteers, at least most of them, $1,200 a month for consideration of providing fire protection to the unincorporated areas of the county. And we expect, and Chief counts on, and we count on here, but the Auditor's Department, the submission of these reports back to the auditor, and Chief relies on the filing of these documents on a monthly basis by these individual departments. And what paragraph one there attempts to do is to reflect the importance of these documents and the importance of the timeliness of this documents, of these documents that are turned in each month. So, it states down there, all departments will use the same forms, which will be provided by the county. And we want to see training summaries that give the date, the subject matter, the number of hours, the instructor's name, the names of the firefighters that were attending the training. Also, the volunteer fire department agrees that the monies that are used, of course, it's all in the name of fire protection, but payment of these sums will be made on a monthly basis. That's what we're committing to the volunteer fire departments. And we're, and this document says, you know, going forward, there's some expectations reporting-wise from you. The county agrees to pay the departments a variable amount based on the number of runs and the firefighter's rate and level of training. So, not only is there a fixed amount that goes to each department, but we also give them monies based on the number of runs that are made by a given number of firefighters. So, we ask that the departments submit these run sheets with a cover sheet that contains the firefighter's name, how many runs were made by that firefighter, the amount that we should pay for each run based on their level of training. So, based on the qualifications of an individual firefighter, he may be paid more or less per run. Then the total amount due for each firefighter along with those training summaries. Look down there in the bold print underlined, failure to timely file the run sheets and training summaries with the county auditor will result in the forfeiture of one month's $1,200 payment for each month that the report is late. Let me quantify that. We've had some instances where we're not getting these reports filed on a timely basis, and I understand people are busy and time can get away, and we can go several months without getting these reports. I believe that the information contained herein and the information that is used to pay these departments, we should be able to get a timely report. And so, this puts a penalty in there if these reports are not filed timely. We're giving them until the end of the following month. So, the data that's accumulated, say during the month of January, would be due by the end of February. So, that gives them 30 additional days after the end of the month. And we're saying, if you miss that deadline, you forfeit a $1,200, which is your fixed rate that is being received. Now, again, this is a suggestion. John Coburn, Barbara, and I worked on this together, and that is our suggestion to ensure that these reports continue to come in, and they come in in a timely fashion. The rest of this document, there's a variety of things that are in here that I would like for you to be aware of so that you can discuss this with any firefighter that says, hey, you know, this doesn't seem right, this doesn't seem fair. And I'm sure we're going to get comments like that, and so this is going to be a give and take as we try to finalize and formalize this document. But understand, again, we have certain expectations, they have expectation from us that we will supply them with the monies that they are due and owing, and we want to be able to continue to do that. This also has some pretty stringent requirements as far as documenting training. But again, that one there in item number one was one of the, was one of the most important. A lot of this talks about just kind of, I hate to use the word boilerplate, but information that talks about equal employment opportunity, providing a drug-free workplace, Americans with disability, non-discrimination, you know, the general things that you would see in any kind of employment contract. It's not real long here, just, you know, five or six pages. Please read through this and be familiar with this. You know, the basic document itself literally is only three pages, and then you've got Exhibit A that's attached there. And here in the next, I think we've got a chief meeting Thursday, is that right? Any of you are welcome to attend that chief meeting that will be at the main station.
Yes, tomorrow.
South end. South end at what time?
6:30.
6:30. And again, we can, we will supply to the individual chiefs this document for them to begin to look over. If they have comments, we certainly want to hear those comments. And if we're being unreasonable here, we want to hear about that. But we want to find a good balance that's fair for both sides. So, again, I ask you to, we're not here to approve this document today, I think we are aways from that, but it's a starting point. Barbara put a lot of time into this, John Coburn put time into this. Be familiar with what we're asking for so that you can discuss. Any questions or comment? I know you haven't had a chance really to absorb all this, but if there's any comments, fine, but be familiar because we'll continue the discussion at our next meeting in a couple of weeks. If there's not any comments, I'll move on. If there is...
Uh-huh.
All right.
I'm good.
Chief, you're welcome to continue to stay with us, both chiefs. Any comments from either, either? Any comments from either of you guys?
Just, we heard you do this back in 2015 and failed, so I applaud you for trying to do it again.
Moving on, item number seven. Consider and possibly approve a policy related to the payment of commercial driver's license, license fees and physicals. In other words, these are expenses that are incurred by our employees who have to maintain a CDL license and who have to get physicals from time to time. And I've worded this so that I'm not pushing you to decide whether you want to pay or not pay, I just think that we need to have a policy related to this so that everyone is treated the same each and every time, and the guys know what their expectations are, and the county knows what our expectations are when it comes to payment of these. So, I'll throw that out, discussion, anybody can begin this discussion. I'm not real familiar with how you have been treating all this in the past, and I think that there's different ways that we can look at this. Is it the county's obligation to pay for a physical or a CDL license of one of our employees that works for us? Or is that the expectation when we hire that employee that you should have a CDL license that you keep up with regardless of who it is that you're working for, and you should pay for your own physicals that go along with that? So, there's been some discussion about this lately. I have not been a part of those discussions, so I don't really know what y'all's thoughts are. What is our, what is our current policy?
Seem like all we have done in the past is pay for the physical for Class A, CDL only. Class A's the only one that has to have a physical once a year if they want to continue to keep their full status of going interstate, which they may want to do if they change jobs or... What's handy for us, if we have a Class A license who takes his physical every year is up to date. If we have to run and get a vehicle like in Texcana Truck Shop, it's over on the Arkansas side, then we're legal to, he can send, he can go up there and get that truck or go get parts or take equipment, or if we borrow a piece of equipment in Shreveport or something, he can go over that state line and be legal up to date. So, it's a real good plus to have Class A license out of the 16. Dana has one with a Class A that's active that will take physicals. Do you have any? Jimmy?
Just myself and one other.
Do you take the physical?
Yeah.
Okay, so, two. My guys, nobody takes a physical. Your guys are Class Bs?
They've got one.
Maybe, Posey? So, there's about maybe five at the most. When we hire road employees, it's just a super bonus to have that CDL license. They have to have a CDL, I mean, because we have some big stuff. So, the CDL Class B is plenty, plenty good. You don't have to take a physical with it if you don't want to. We'll get a little insigniation on, they put a number on the back of your license, so it's not required since we are a municipality. So, most of them don't. But having these Class A to drive the big, two big rigs that we have hauling equipment and hauling materials is a super big bonus plus for us. And the ones that take the extra time and get that physical every year. So, replacing a Class A license is the subject really that I would say is the most important. The Class B, hadn't considered paying the license fee for that, but we just had some get renewed, and it's every eight years. So, it's mainly only maybe twice in a whole career working for the county that we would ever have to do that. It's $97 to replace, to pay for their actual Class A license fee at the motor vehicle. Then a physical is usually $60, $80 or something. They only go to certain doctors that'll give that physical for DOT, so less than $100 there yearly and...
That's not covered by our insurance, that kind of a physical?
I'm not sure.
I don't think the DOT...
It's not like the physical, annual report physical that you get for free that's included in our insurance.
Something like Dr. Matkin.
It's an extra and you go to specialty. Matkin, okay. I knew it was a special, certain doctor, so... So, we can keep it the same and just put it down on record that we will pay for the physical for a Class A license holder, that's one option, or for that Class A, pay for the license and the physical. They don't necessarily have to have that physical and have that rating on their license. They can still have Class A license and drive everywhere we need them to step out of state, which is pretty rare. So, at least I would be for making it official that we'll pay for that physical every year.
What have we done in the past?
We usually, never came up till about two, three years ago that they would pay for a physical, and that was it.
I think when we hired the three, three guys during the unit system, I think that was really the first time that we agreed to pay for the physical.
We've only done it two or three times, you know, yeah.
And this physical has to be every year?
No, it's every time they get your license.
Just every eight years, yeah.
Okay, I thought it was yearly.
Medical is well, every two years.
Is it every two, it's, yeah, it's every two years, isn't it?
Yeah, every eight would seem.
That's just taking a good...
You're right.
If they find an issue, they want to see you back every year.
Yes.
How many CDL license holders did you say, 17?
We have 16. Three of us are, well, yeah, three of us commissioners, so it's actually... We have 16, three of us, well, yeah, three of us commissioners, so it's actually 13 employees. We have...
Everybody had the requirement of an annual physical, it'd be 16 every year?
No, yeah, but that's not going to happen.
Well, that'd be the high end.
Yes, that'd be high end, and right now it's maybe five.
The only way you've got to have the physical is if you're driving out of state.
Mm-hmm. And a lot of our employees, they want to keep that up every year, you know, they're going to get their physical every two years so they can have their, because once you quit doing it and just keep the license, working for a municipality and get the P stamped on your license, you'll have to go back and do some retesting if you decide you need to be driving out of state or something for something.
I thought a medical card would, no matter what, in state or out of state, because every time you get stopped by the DOT, you ask for a medical card. So I mean, that's my understanding.
Even if you're driving nothing but in the state?
If you're driving a commercial vehicle, you have to have it, as far as I know.
Unless you have the P stamped on your license. So most are Class B, they have that P on there, that's what I've got, and you can do it on an A, but our Class A license holders don't have that. They, they're going to have to have those physicals. So there's five of them. That's the most important one. That's the only drivers that can drive that rig with the trailer and everything, the lowboy and that Peterbilt truck, that big truck or that Kenworth. So those are the main ones.
Well, it sounds like we need to establish exactly how often these physicals are required and by whom before we can make this decision. Still sounds to me like a relatively small expenditure, but I guess then we've got to decide if it's, that physical's not required for them to work doing county work, should the county be responsible for paying it. Now, if it's required every year or every two years for any driving within the state, that kind of changes things.
Mm-hmm.
So in your opinion, if there is an obligation to pay for a physical by one of our employees, that the county should pick it up, just generally speaking?
I would think so, yes.
Okay, talk about the license fees.
So license fee's $97 every eight years. Class B license guys do that, like myself. But the Class A is the most important for us, for our biggest truck and for hauling the big equipment, taking something for repair, picking up a piece of equipment or even going up to Hanson or in the Arkansas-Forman area, picking up a load of gravel if they needed to. So that's the one that's most important to me if we were going to pay for that license fee, to pay for his license every eight years, because that's just an extra bonus. That's a great certification to have, to pull that trailer. And it would be, right now it's five people. So we had never done that before, so that was a question. It was just some gray area. Is it the physical or is it buying the license? And so, you know, I don't know. So that's why we brought this up, and I know we have paid for a few physicals in the past, so I'm for sure in favor of paying for the, a physical for someone who has a Class B without the P on it that wants to keep that physical rating up on their license so they can drive, you know, independently if they wanted to. So I'm for paying for a physical for Class B or C, I guess. There's not as many in Class B. We're talking less than 10 people altogether, so...
Anybody feel different about that?
I'm going to pay for my own like I have been.
Yeah, me too. I mean, I don't...
I'm not going.
I don't have to drive no big rig. I just have a Class B and I only have one truck that I need that Class B license for. And so as far as, when someone takes off as a commissioner, he can, he doesn't have to have a commercial license, but comes in handy in case you borrow a truck or something, so...
Do you think...
But I would pay for my own.
Do you think between now and the next meeting, somebody, one of y'all could find out?
How many?
What are the physical requirements?
Yeah, the years and such.
In other words, if you tell me it's only required if somebody that drives out of state, my attitude's going to probably be different about paying for this as opposed to somebody that's never going to leave the state.
Yes, and we could just designate two drivers, in case one of them's on vacation or something, and say, we'll pay for your physical, so they will be sure enough up to date if we had to go get something over a state line, so that's possible.
The only thing about it, our trucks are not licensed to go out of state.
Okay, so that's not even needing to be, that doesn't need to be a requirement?
Back years ago, we did, we did have.
It's just inside state.
Ricky hauled a lot of stuff out of Arkansas and Oklahoma and whatnot, but since then, we have not had any, any of our vehicles that are even licensed to go out of state. The fuel permit and all that kind of stuff that you've got to have, we hadn't had that on any of them.
I can see that. So really, it's not a life changer either way if we don't pay for anything, because we all had to have a regular driver's license anyway, so...
Do you, would y'all be okay if I asked, Jeff's got all kinds of good connections to this world of truck driving, do you think for the next meeting you could find out what is the obligation of our guys that might be an expense that they bear that we should pay for? And then we'll be prepared to hear from Jeff, be able to quantify this, and then vote and decide what, if any, we do want to pay for, for our employees? Okay?
All right, that sounds good.
Well, how about we, how about...
Table this motion, for now, make a motion to table it.
Motion to table, item number seven is made by Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, item number eight, consider the current county payroll policy related to COVID-19 in light of the family's first Coronavirus Response Act with possible action to follow. As of the end of the year, there's been a slight change in what the federal government says our obligation is, and we need to decide what our policy is going to be, if we are going to mirror that, if we are going to keep our policy the same. Barbara, may I call on you to kind of explain to us what was in force as of through the end of December 31st of 2020? What has changed? And then help us to understand what we need to decide to do.
Yes, sir. Before COVID hit, everyone had 80 hours of family medical leave. You had to, been employed by the county for one year in order to be eligible. When the Coronavirus hit, that's when this family, Families' First Coronavirus Response Act came out, and with that, employees were required to have an additional 80 hours of emergency FMLA. Now, there's a list of requirements, and y'all have seen those, we sent those out, the court approved those. That went away at December 31st. So now what the recommendation is, is that we have choices. We can either not do anything, we can just go back to regular FMLA of 80 hours, or we can leave that emergency 80 hours in place. Now, if we leave the 80 hours in place, we are getting a payroll tax credit, and we've already gotten that back. One reason that you would think not to do that would be because we're paying wages for people who aren't here. Keep in mind, those things are already budgeted. It's not an additional cost to our budget. We budget their whole time. It's just that 80 additional hours that we could get reimbursed with the payroll tax credits. The payroll tax credits will expire March 31st. So far, we've gotten back $20,793 in payroll tax credits. So we have offset that 80, the additional of emergency family leave, we've offset those costs. So my recommendation to you would be that we go ahead and continue that until March 31st, simply in order to protect our staff. We don't want someone to be sick and not be willing to come forward and say, I'm sick, I've been exposed, those kinds of things. That could happen. Perhaps they've already used up their regular FMLA, their regular 80 hours, or perhaps they just, they want to come to work, but, you know. So I think it would benefit us to protect our staff who aren't sick to do that for one more quarter. And then at that time, we may decide to do something else, or the payroll tax credits may be extended. But right now, it is available to us through March 31st, but we need your vote, your decision on that, please.
But talking about the expense to the county, you said we've already got the money budgeted. Well, that's assuming that you don't replace somebody when somebody is absent.
Right.
In other words, you just do without that person in your office.
Right.
What about in the sheriff's office, where sheriff can't, he doesn't have that luxury, just said, oh, I'll just do without somebody in the jail today or do without somebody on patrol. We've got to replace that person, so it does become a real expense.
Yes.
Over and above our, what is budgeted.
Yes, but only in that law enforcement area. Then the other offices, as far as I'm aware, we just do without and do the best we can and get through.
And then if we, if we extend this, in other words, you have a situation where somebody that got that full 80 hours, say, back during 2020, now they get exposed or they come down with COVID, not necessarily again, but they, for whatever reason, that department says, department head says, I don't want you in the office, I feel like you're a risk. In other words, it's a decision of that department head, it's not that employee deciding, you know, I've got a cough and stuffy head today, I, it might be COVID, I think I'm going to stay home. We're not talking about that, we're talking about where that conversation is between the department head and the employee, and that department says, I don't want you here. I feel like you're, you're a risk and I need you to stay home. So you could have somebody that got the benefit of staying home there during October, November, December, whenever it was, same thing happens again, and they're gone again. So what I'm, what I just heard Barbara say is, you know, I would suggest to you that you continue this on to the end of March. So the first quarter, you could be liable for paying employees that were not at work or that had to be replaced, say, by the sheriff. And that's not what the federal, the federal law says. The federal law brought that benefit to an end as of December 31st. So what should we do going forward? You know, Barbara and I have talked about this, is it, let's say that somebody missed no days in 2020, and here we are, if we don't approve continuation of this, you know, say on January 11th today, they have to be sent home because they caught COVID. If we don't continue this, that person is not treated the same as somebody was during You know, I thought about some kind of a modification or hybrid to that is, if you didn't take it in 2020, you can have that time paid in 2021, at least through the end of March. I don't know what's, what is the best policy here, but it doesn't seem fair that a department head would make a decision, we don't want you here, this is not your decision, employee, this is my decision, I believe that under the circumstances, our, the rest of our department is safer without you being here. And that doesn't seem fair to not get paid. I find it interesting that the federal government has stopped this, but I guess they feel like the other stimulus items that they're doing, you know, offset that perhaps. But, you know, think about how this would affect your crews, how it affects different, different, you know, departments there, and again, we're asking for a decision through the end of March here, first quarter.
Can you add a second?
Yes, sir.
One of the things that I look at for the sheriff's office is, we've got the vaccination out now, a lot of my half crew don't want to take it, they have to. The thing is, I, being law enforcement, I actually could make a mandatory that they do take it, but I'm probably not going to do that, not going to force them to do it. But already, there's more signed up, we thought this was going to end. So one benefit of ending this, and I agree with Barbara, I think we need to do it until the first April, on 31st, but we've all had a chance to get that shot. There's going to come a point, and I think we do need to end it, because it just gives people, which, you know, the opportunity not to be careful if they're going to keep getting these freebies and getting paid. I mean, we took good care of our employees, I think we need to continue to do that, but now the shots offered, they refuse it, I think there's going to come a time we need to stop the protection if they're, if you want them to be careful and help us and work with us. Like I say already, because they've heard that money's going to run out, we have to start signing up to get the vaccination, which is good, you have to keep us from getting and keep us to work. So just kind of keep that in mind, too. I mean, if the shot keeps up, we can all, and it's offered to us in law enforcement. For those that don't want it, I think there's going to come a time, we do stop these handouts on this, and if, because if they're not going to work with us, try to be careful and take the shot and do things. I don't think you need reward on that, if I keep paying them, I have to be careful and do some of this or anything that will help us out as a county. Something to think about, you guys, but I do think until we can all have the opportunity to get the vaccination, the fact is that I'd love to keep and do this, that'll help our people. But like I say, come first April, I really wish we'd kind of reconsider maybe ending it, possibly if we have a chance to get the shot.
You have questions for me on that?
Thank you, no.
And Tim?
I'm hoping by the first April, we'll have some shots, you know, so everybody can get caught up. I know underlying condition folks are being able to get a shot, and a lot of us don't have an underlying condition, so we'll just wait till it's our turn and when we can find one, so that'll help. And we may get some more government assistance, whatever Congress wants to do, you know, but since we get a tax credit, I think it's good to keep continuing this to April 1st. We don't have any substitutes really in most of our offices and departments to just keep dragging. As far as road crew, we can't get nobody else. And I had all four of my road crew people this last month on COVID. I had three at the same time on quarantine, and then I got COVID, and I was out in November through the first part of December for 21 days. It makes it tough on everybody, so with the holidays, they, they had holiday pay anyway for a couple of those days, so we didn't use every day they had. But I feel like we've been lucky, my four guys, none of them have gotten the COVID yet, but it could happen, because the numbers are rising. I'm for extending, continuing this through April 1st.
Explain how those payroll tax credits work. Is that a dollar-for-dollar offset?
It is, and in addition to the, the actual salary, we get the FICA, we get the Medicare, and we also get the health insurance that the county pays.
Well, that's a good deal.
It is a good deal.
Have we got about $20,000 in the...
Yes, sir.
Third quarter, fourth quarter?
No, that's two quarters worth.
Two quarters worth.
Yes, about $10,000 each for the second quarter and the third quarter, and we've not finished the, we finished the fourth quarter, we've not done the report yet. So it depends on how many people are out. That's why it's important on those timesheets that it says COVID on there.
Questions, discussion, decision?
I make a motion, we continue this till the March 31st deadline, take advantage of the tax credits.
Second.
Okay, the motion is to continue with our current policy, which essentially is if the employee's absence from work is determined by the choice of the department head, then we will, they're eligible for up to 80 hours of additional, I mean, of pay while they're absent. That is not sick pay, it's not, doesn't go against any of their benefits, as it were.
Right.
Okay. I have a motion, I have a second by Commissioner Parchman. Discussion, anyone? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item number nine, consider and possibly approve a resolution adopting our Titus County Cafeteria Plan. Cafeteria Plan, again, is, has several components. It's not just what we do with Colonial, but, you know, part of that cafeteria plan helps offset some payroll taxes and such, but this is, we need to adopt this each year in order to maintain our cafeteria plan, which we certainly want to do. We need to annually say that.
Make a motion, we can continue.
Make a motion, we continue with this.
Motion to approve a resolution adopting our Titus County Cafeteria Plan, made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I think that I forwarded this to you all in item number 10, I simply wanted to bring to the public's attention that Cali at the AgriLife Extension Office, they are continuing to provide some seminars, both in-person and virtual seminars, they've got, I believe, pesticide applicators, license, pest management, they've got some great courses up there, they're not shut down doing nothing, they've got good training still available, both in-person, in a safe fashion, and virtually, in a very safe fashion. So I just wanted you to be aware of that, and if you need to have anybody trained in pesticides, pest management, check out the AgriLife Extension Office, or give them a call, and find out what is available and when those are available. Again, no reason to have this on the agenda, other than I wanted, wanted everyone that's listening to this meeting to know about that, especially the commissioners.
The pesticide, it's the third, next Tuesday, I think, pesticide.
Do they still have some open? They, another city is going to be letting you do it.
Yes.
I think they still have some.
Where is that going to be, at the Civic Center?
Call out there to the, and see if they got it, talk to Cali.
Item number 11, considering possibly approve bonds for elected officials, we have some new elected officials, we have some re-elected officials, and, Joan has provided that for me. Joan, maybe I left it in my office. Let me go back in there and get it, we've got five bonds that need county approval. Hang on one second. If you're an elected official, you know what these bonds are required, this ensures proper performance by that elected official, and some bonds are more expensive than others, but the ones that I am asking for your approval on is Ray Barrett, Melissa Stevens, Sheriff Ingram, Chris Durant, and John Mark Coburn, and they have provided all of these bonds that they've made arrangements for, and we just need to approve and accept those bonds.
What about Jeff's bond, have we already approved it?
Yeah, I do that.
Okay, because it's an early bird deal, first time?
Well, I approve the commissioners' bonds, the commissioners approve these other bonds.
Okay, all right. Because I remember.
The paperwork should approve the bonds.
Motion's made by Commissioner Applewhite for approval.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, you have your usual meeting material that's been provided for you by Barbara and then by Cheryl. First of all, we will take a look at oral and written reports there, provided by Barbara, that she has emailed to you.
Make a motion, we approve the report.
Motion for approval is made by Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
And second by Commissioner Applewhite, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This will require your signature, and I'll pass these along with the treasurer's report here in just a moment. Item number 13, considering possibly approve the treasurer's report.
Make a motion, we approve.
Motion to approve treasurer's report, Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number 14, approve budget amendments, I've got two budget amendments, let me wait until we get these signatures, so I can make sure everybody's listening. Budget amendment, we have two, number 2021-10 and -11. Number 10 relates to, we had a couple of different items related to David Colley's office, the first time we made approval was to approve closing out David's accounts while he was an employee as the deputy district attorney, and, or assistant district attorney, and that involved paying him some accrued benefits. And then the next time, we talked about allowing him to hire in advance of him taking office on December 28th, 29th, and, no, 29th, 30th, 31th, whatever those days were, about three days worth of hiring new employees, and in both of these cases, we agreed to pay those expenses out of the forfeiture fund. So again, increase in line items for assistant district attorney and support staff as previously approved, with an offsetting increase to transfer in from the DA forfeiture fund, resulting in zero impact to the general county budget. And then we increased a line item for the transfer from the district attorney forfeiture fund into those accounts where the money was going to be coming out of. So that's number 10. Number 11, we talked last week about getting some additional federal inmates, and we approved some partial increase to the anticipated revenue. This is additional anticipated revenue with an offsetting expense that's going to take care of the meals that have to be provided. So we don't, it's not just one side of where we get money for these federal inmates, we've got some expenses related to them, and this talks about their meals, this, the amount of this budget amendment is $60,625. Barbara's reason for amendment, increase to estimated revenue for housing federal inmates with an offsetting increase to federal inmate meals, which results in a zero impact to the county budget. Those are the only two amendments.
Make motion to approve the amendments.
Motion to approve the amendments is made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite, all in favor, say aye. Item number 15, sign pay orders and approve payments.
Make a motion to pay our bills.
Motion to pay those bills is made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item number 16, closing comments, if any. You know, the bad news here is, you know, this, the COVID problem is as hard and high as it has been since we started, we all know, folks that are currently sick, that have recently gotten over this, and unfortunately, too many that have suffered the death of a loved one. We're hearing about these on a daily basis, and the vaccine is slowly trickling in, we've gotten the additional, the initial round of 700 shots that we got at the hospital, all those are gone, those were for the benefit of hospital employees, physicians, clinical workers, first responders, and there was a good number of teachers that were even able to receive a vaccine. Then we had about 100 doses each that were received at about three different pharmacies here in town. Don't know when the next receipt of vaccines will be, we are working right now with Chief McCray and Nathan Carroll with Department of Emergency Management and Department of State Health Services to get what we have been told will be a substantial number of vaccines, that we can set up an organized dispensary station, perhaps at the Civic Center, where folks could come, and we could hopefully get a high volume of these done. I don't know when that's going to be, and I don't know how many there are going to be, and there will still be protocols that need to be followed as far as who needs to receive those. But the good news is that is coming, and we don't know what substantial amount means, we don't know how we're going to exactly determine who gets them and who doesn't get them, but the hospital has volunteered some of their services and software that enables people to pre-register, so that, you know, they're not showing up there and going through the questionnaire process of whether or not they're eligible for a shot. There are waiting lists at the hospital and at Thurman's Pharmacy, Walgreens, and...
Super 1.
Super 1, where you can get on a waitlist, those waitlists are getting pretty large in size, but if you don't sign up, you never will get a phone call. And if there is anybody, again, that asks you these questions, unfortunately, I can't give you the answer right now, but we're hoping that this receipt will be in the next couple of weeks, is what we have been led to believe, but I'm sure not going to guarantee that to anybody. So, there are more vaccines coming, in the meantime, your mask is your best vaccine, that and social distancing, and being smart, and monitoring your personal, your personal symptoms, and if there's anything that's out of line, you know, get tested, we still have free testing going on seven days a week. With that, I will turn it over to Commissioner Parker, any closing comments, sir?
The only thing I would say is I'd send my condolences and our condolences to the Conroy family and the other families that have lost loved ones here in the last few days. Just ask everyone to be in prayer for these families, it's hard.
Commissioner Applewhite?
I did talk to the, I made a phone call, because on the vaccinations, it's 1B and 1A, 1A is the paramedics and doctors and all that, but 1B is for 65 and older, but unless you have cancer or diabetes, you are eligible to receive the shot, like the lady told me the other day. We put on the waiting list.
Yeah, based on availability.
Right, and like I said, there's, like I said, we've lost a lot of members at Argo and all over, you know, a lot of families lost, a lot of loved ones. Keep them in our prayers.
Commissioner Fitch?
Just be in prayer for everybody with the COVID and ones that have lost loved ones, we got, I heard quite a few people this week where one loved one or one spouse is in a hospital and the other one's at home, and it's real difficult on the families, so wear a mask and social distance, and be careful out there.
Commissioner Parchman?
I just want to send prayers out to the Conroy family as well, in their time of need.
All right, thank you, thank you for everyone's attendance today. If there is nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Make that motion. Motion's made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Parker, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.